Now, let's ask right off the bat, why do you want to do this for another four years?
Oh, it's been so much fun. I've made so many friends. Uh, I've had so many enlightening, enriching relationships that, uh, I said, why, you know, why not, uh, why not do this again? No, in all, in all honesty, uh, our work is not done. What we've, uh, what we started, the path that we started down, uh, for me, actually, it was, uh, April of, of 21, you know, a little over, uh, four and a half years ago, or almost four and a half years ago, there was a lot of things that we wanted to get done, uh, where, where, where part of the way, uh, down that path, there's still things that need to be fixed. There's still improvements that, uh, that need to be made. And, um, you know, I've, I've never been one to, uh, to want to stop before your, your mission and your goal's done. So we still have some things that, uh, we need to collectively work together on for the betterment of the entire, entirety of the city, stakeholders, residents. Yep.
Now whoever is elected for, in the next four years, we can see in the background, behind you, the steel mill, and, uh, that's going to be gone soon, what we're seeing right now. And then something's going to happen with the property. Right now, what's your gut feeling that what's going to happen with it?
Well, you know, it's interesting. I was having a conversation with someone over the weekend, uh, just about how much has happened over there since. It's been kind of quiet, you know, it's a private entity, uh, uh, that, that for whatever reason, market factors, uh, led to its demise. Um, there's a lot of demolition going on there now. It's sad to actually drive by. I mean, it's literally just a few hundred yards from my home, uh, that, you know, I've been here, uh, listening to the clatter of the rails, uh, cars and listening to, uh, the furnaces and the people coming and going. It's a sad commentary that it's no longer here. Um, you know, I wish, uh, I wish the best for the people that have, uh, found hardship out of that situation. What do I think's going to happen? Um, I, you know, I wish Scott, that, that I had, uh, a little bird on my shoulder telling me what it was going to be. I hope, uh, that whoever and whatever ends up, uh, of, of the facility, that it's, uh, high paying jobs, that it's, uh, a mix of, uh, commercial, industrial, manufacturing, uh, uh, you know, I would love to see, uh, since it's right there at the, at, at, at the edge of town, connecting the west side to the east side, I would love to see some thing that would be a bridge, a cultural bridge, an art bridge between, uh, the different parts and economic, uh, factors within the city.
Now, we're only days away from, uh, the zoning changing on that property. Um, of course, you know, the deadline was, uh, this October. If they did not reopen and, uh, put people back to work, then it will be zoned in a way that it can no longer be heavy industrial.
Yep.
So, um, what do you think, uh, is that going to mean? I mean, that, that big day's coming up. Um, what do you think that's going to mean? What's that day gets here?
So I think, uh, you know, I, I've had conversations with people and people have asked me, uh, similar questions, um, and I've said, you know, until, until everyone, all of us have held out hope that it, that it could, uh, start back, that it could employ people. Um, we are down to within a matter of days, probably five, six, seven days, and the zoning will change. You know, that was an ordinance, uh, that was a collaborative effort between the steel mill, the steel mill owners and the management and, uh, the previous mayor, um, that they had some meetings behind closed doors. Uh, the previous administration asked the steel mill to go ahead and write what they thought would be a fair and, uh, fair and favorable agreement between them and the city. So really, the agreement was crafted by the steel mill. Um, the city, uh, read through it, approved it, probably made some edits and took it back to them. And then collectively, there was massage to a document that was acceptable to all. Uh, certainly had nothing to do with this city council that was crafted and, 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 uh, that deal was put together, uh, without our knowledge, um, uh, with this city council's knowledge. Uh, but what we are tasked with is abiding by what, uh, what ordinances, what zoning regulations have come before us. Um, I'm not sure if there's really anything we could have done prior to the situation that we're at now, looking at five days to the zoning change. Uh, again, I just want to reiterate that it's, it's a sad commentary. It's been a great, uh, catalyst for jobs and raising families in the city of Georgetown. And I've been in Georgetown County myself for 28 years, uh, half my life. And, uh, every time I drive back and forth, I see it and I realize what that has meant to so many people, to so many generations of people. So, you know, my prayers and my thoughts are, are, are to, uh, are to what's going to be best for them and what's going to be best for the city and the highest and best use moving forward.
The steel mill is in the city limits. The port and international paper is not.
Correct.
But how much say so will the city be given in what happens with the port and what happens with international paper property?
Scott, that's a great question. You know, you, you would think, looking at, you know, looking at the city where the city is, the port is just up the river and at one, uh, uh, right on the river and then IP is just right up, right up the river. Um, and at one point, the, the IP property, I think back in the 30s, was part of the city. And when they decided to come here and build that plant, there was a carve out made, um, a concession made that it would move into the county, uh, for whatever reason. Well, I can't speak to what that, well, you know, what, what the reasoning was back then. Uh, but they have existed as our neighbor, as, uh, our, our shared interest holder, um, for, you know, 90, you know, 85, 90 years. Um, what I would hope, uh, and I know there's been some conversations. I have, uh, good friends on county council. We have conversations with them. I would hope that the city, uh, would be given an opportunity to sit at the table as the discussions are being had, uh, for the redevelopment of the port, um, and, uh, and the IP property. Um, I think it would be, uh, I think it would be great, uh, the greatest, uh, opportunity would be if there was one or a small group of development team, team members that were involved in all three. And I would just ask the powers that be, that the city be given a seat at the table, uh, if not to be a voting member or that just to hear what's going on because, you know, people ask us as city council members, they ask the mayor, what's going on there. Um, we, what we don't want is to give anyone that's part of this team, that's part of this collaborative effort, IP, steel mill and port. We don't want any of those people to feel like they've been left out or they've been looked down upon. I think this is going to be something that's transformative, uh, one of the largest coastal redevelopment, uh, opportunities along the east coast. And I think everyone's voice should be heard and everyone should be, uh, at the table collectively, um, with consideration of what, what the opportunities are.
All right. So yeah, I mean, uh, when do you think we'll hear more about what may happen with Steel Mill property? How far are we, are we hearing more information?
Well, I will, I'll, I'll tell you this. Uh, I've asked the mayor a time or two. Um, she, uh, surely has been part of conversations that are, uh, private and confidential. Uh, Carol has not shared those specific details with me. To answer your question, when do you think we'll hear something? I think within the next month to two months, we will hear, uh, we will start seeing the development of a picture of what's going to happen at the mill. I think the news will break of the mill first, uh, the steel mill that is. And then, um, that will segue into an announcement of what's going to happen at IP. Um, as far as the port, there's been, Carol and I drove through that the other day and we looked at, uh, where we had had some, uh, some boats removed here from the harbor and demolition of those boats. We wanted to make sure that if there's anything the city could do to help the DNR and the people, our partners that were doing that, that if there's anything we could do, we could do. Um, I think, uh, within the next 30 to 60 days, the picture will become a little more clear of the direction and, uh, the purpose of what, uh, is going to happen on all, all three of those sites. I think the last one that will come into clarity will be the port.
Now, the county, of course, uh, about a week or so ago held a meeting to kick off their UDO. The city's doing something very similar. What is that going to be for the city? Tell us some more about that.
So what's going to be interesting with that, Scott, is we need to make sure that the direct, the direction and the path that the county is moving forward over the next five to 10, 15, 20 years is consistent and congruent with what we want to do here in the city. Um, the, we would not want to have opposing and opposite, uh, approaches to development, to smart development. Um, we always talk about how do we finance the growth of the county? How do we finance the growth of the city, ever increasing budgets? You know, we have to pay our employees more. Uh, same thing within the government instituted pay structure or within a private institute of pay structure. Each, each, each year your expenses are going to go up. What we want to make sure and what the county wants to make sure is that we have a development plan that is consistent with one another, that's, that, that is not, uh, that is not opposing in principle or in theory to what we want to do. Now, everything can't be perfect, but for the most part, if, if, if we can have a development plan that is consistent and workable from both sides, that will allow a smart growth, uh, from the commercial sector, from the residential sector, what none of us want is, uh, is Myrtle Beach. What none of us want is the Charleston traffic, is, uh, the congestion, the one hour commute to go 10 miles. None of us want that. The business owners don't want it. The people don't want it. The county does not want it. The county has done a great job so far. Uh, my hat's off to them, to Clint and Stella and Bob and all, and, 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 uh, Mr. Mr. Moran, all the people on, at the county level and Angela have done a great job. We want to make sure that as we move down this path, that what we do is consistent and agreeable and workable between us as an entity, as a city and the county.
Let me ask you about, uh, the other big topic that's been talked about a lot this year, that's electric bills.
Sure.
What can the city do about the rates, if anything?
Nothing can be done about the rates in the short term. Um, what, uh, you know, I've got some information here, Scott, that's very surprising. You know, we, this, the, the utility rate, uh, the utility rate, all storm water, electric, water treatment, water distribution, uh, you know, that has been a topic of conversation. Uh, we have seen through press conferences that there's been people on the other side, uh, of this election that are trying to exploit that for their political advantage. Uh, we've seen the deception. We've seen cutoffs of the utility bills. Uh, we've seen where I can't believe I have a $2,000 electric bill. Well, when you actually go back and look, it's a four month utility bill. Uh, if we're going to be consistent, I think we need to be clear. We need to be honest. We need to be concise. And, and if you want help, if you want to have a topic of conversation about utility bills, electric bills, water bills, then I think to really be legitimately, uh, considered factual, you need to show the whole bill. Let's, let's not black stuff out. Let's not redact information. Um, what can be done, what can be done, uh, should have, what should have been done years ago, um, is, is what we were forced with. We knew coming in here. And Mayor Giroux said, there's hard decisions to be made and this council will make those decisions. She said that four years ago. Uh, the bottom line is that I pay the same kilowatt hour that the, my next door neighbor, that the people over at Beck, that the people over by the hospital, the people on the west end. I pay the same amount of kilowatt hour that anyone else does. So the act, the act, the insinuation that somehow people are getting over on the system, i- it's really laughable. Um, what should have happened is the city should have taken a more, uh, a, a, a plan and action moving forward throughout the years that had slow incremental increases. Bottom line is, we still have the second lowest utility rates in the state. Now, think about that. You have a state, a, a, a state of over 6 million people and the residents and stakeholders of the city of Georgetown pay the second lowest rate across the board in the state of South Carolina. If we would have slowly incremented, uh, increases throughout the years, throughout the last 10 years, we wouldn't be having this conversation now. What I'm holding here, let me put my glasses on, Scott, share this with you. This is the city of Georgetown voting analysis report. I would encourage you and anyone watching this to do a little research and let's look at, like hypothetically, what I'm looking at right here is the voting record from 2018 to 2021. It's being framed that, uh, the Democrats have never moved forward or never wanted to, uh, have utility rate increases. I would encourage all of you watching this and you, Scott, to pull this information. It's very easy to get. And let's take a look at what was, uh, what was passed unanimously for, uh, water and, uh, wastewater rates, what was passed, uh, non-unanimously, what was unanimous vote for the fiscal budget, uh, on property taxes, uh, what was passed and voted on and who voted for and who voted against. Cause there's people that are trying to frame the argument that I've never voted for a utility rate increase. Well, I'm sorry, but as a matter of public record, you have. So let's be, let's be true and be honest. There's nothing wrong with saying, look, we had to make a decision, whether it was in the now, three years ago or six years ago. But to hide behind the fact that you're going to depend, that someone's not going to find the information and expose you for voting for utility rate increases, I think it's disingenuous. And then when you put it in front of a camera and you show half of our utility bill with redacted information as a means of inflammatory, uh, uh, inflammatory information to, uh, to whip up the vote, I mean, you know, I think it says more about the people that are doing that than it says about the people that made the hard decision to do what was right from the fiscal standpoint of the city.
So who on that list that's running for election this year voted in favor of increases?
The information is very easy to get. This information that I've got is from 2018 to 2021. Uh, let's look through, um, storm water, increased storm water fee, electric, uh, voted yes, Brendan Barber, Al Joseph, uh, uh, Smalls, uh, voted no. Oh, look at this. Here's one. Jonathan Enkner voted no. Um, I, I would just encourage you and I'll show this to you personally and let you, uh, let you do with it what you will. But they, but, but the premise that the Democrats have never voted for utility increases is completely patently false. Now, they may have passed some utility increases, but passing and then enacting them is something totally different. So we inherited a situation that was a no win. Bottom line comes down to, we knew the utility system was facing in essence, for lack of a better term, foreclosure, that there was going to be a, a bank out of New York, out of Wall Street, that because we had signed and we had collateralized the debt for our underground infrastructure and some of our overhead infrastructure, uh, the collateral for that was, uh, was our utility system, our enterprise fund. And when we came into office just before our utility rate bond, or our bonding rate was decreased. Why? Because the city had historically led the utilities of profit. They had not reinvested, uh, in capital expenditures to, uh, to make sure that our system was viable and resilient to storms. Um, the, 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 the utility system had been just taken advantage of and we had to inherit a situation where it was either we continue what had been laid in front of us for the previous 20 years and then a Wall Street firm would have owned our utility system. And they told us right upfront, you fix it or we're going to, we're going to foreclose and take possession of the utility system. And the numbers they were looking at was 40 to 60%. So yeah, when you look at a 13%, a 16%, that's a lot cheaper than 60%. So, you know, that, the point is, we need to be, uh, genuine and we need to be, uh, honest with the data that we've got. And no one likes it. No one likes the increases. I certainly don't like it. I don't like the fact that my neighbors and the people I go to church with and the people that I see on, uh, on a day-to-day basis are paying more. No one wants to pay more. But the bottom line is, I'd rather pay 13, 17, 19% more staged over a period of years than 60% at one, at one point when our utility system and enterprise funds are owned by a bank out of New York.
Yeah. I'm not exactly sure how it works. So this might not even be possible. The city is a, probably one of the bigger customers for Santee Cooper, at least in Georgetown County.
Sure.
Is there not a way that somebody representing the city goes sit down with Santee Cooper, tries to negotiate better rates for the city?
We have done that. Those conversations have taken place. What, one of the, the hardest things for us was, uh, beginning, you know, just a few months ago, when Santee Cooper, uh, let us know that there was going to be 11, you know, after we had pretty much finished our budget, uh, Santee Cooper had let us know that there was going to be an 11% increase. There was no way for us to plan for that. Um, and that, you know, that was a real kick in the gut for, for, for the stakeholders, the rate payers across the city of Georgetown. Um, and we were just caught, we were just as much caught by surprise as, as the next person.
Let me go back to the steel mill property and whatever may happen with it in the future. We've heard two different groups of people talk about concerns about what may happen and what the effects will be. Uh, we've heard some people say that there's being a huge emphasis now on, um, Highway 17, maybe spilling over into Maryville and that it's going to take away from the emphasis on our historic history. And, you know, what made Georgetown what it is, the historic district. We've also heard the, uh, residents of the west end say that it may price them out of their, their homes. What do you say to both groups?
Okay. What do we say to both groups? Uh, I say that I, I hope Georgetown does not lose the flavor, the culture, the identity of what we have now. Um, I would also say that every administration prior to this administration has had the opportunity, the city has funded study after study after study and paid tens of thousands of dollars for different opinions, professional opinions on how we reconnect, how we grow the city footprint, how we grow our cultures together, uh, and nothing ever happened. Uh, this, this mayor and this city administration finally said enough is enough. The west end of town, you've been taken for granted. You've been pushed aside. You've been overlooked. There has never been a city administration that has put more effort and more, uh, concern into redeveloping the west end. And the, and the basis of that is us moving the center of the city, the lifeblood, the heart of the city, the city hall. And where do we put that? We put it on the west end of town. So to answer your question, are we worried about gentrification? We absolutely are. There's got to be ways that the people of the west end can reap the benefits of, uh, of an invigorated city, uh, of city hall and the other parts of town, looking to that part of town and saying, this is a gem. It's an, it's, it's an, it's a gem that needs some help and that's what we've done. Um, I would, I would, uh, challenge anyone that, uh, that is interested in the conversation to sit down and talk about what this city administration has done to help all parts of town, all parts of town, whether we're investing in underground utilities, water sewer, overhead utilities, uh, sidewalks, uh, parks. Um, and so I'm not sure if I've completely answered your question, but I, I would say no city administration has ever given the love and attention to all parts of the town as this has, this, this administration has.
Speaking of the west end part of that question, um, when property values are reassessed four years from now, five years from now, I mean, are the residents going to see that their, because of what's happened around them, that their property values have gone up so much that they're not able to afford the, the taxes and?
Well, our workshop just this past week, uh, we voted to decrease our mileage rate, uh, in, in, in hopes because the countywide assessment process has, has worked its way through. And so you have to have a net zero, uh, as far as your, your tax basis goes. So we, all I can say is we're, 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 we are concerned about that and we have worked and we will continue to work to make the city the safest, the most viable, the most livable, the most economic location on the Grand Strand and the walk a neck to live.
But we saw what happened to Pauli's Island in Lynchville. I mean, back in the day when I was growing up, you know, it was woods and small houses between here and probably Merle's Inn.
Yeah.
Um, and all the businesses started. And now you see very, very few houses in that area because they got, uh,
Swallowed up.
Yeah. I mean, how do we know that's not going to happen here?
You know, Scott, I would love to tell you it's not going to happen here. I would love to tell you that, uh, that our way of life is not going to change. But the bottom line is, uh, change is inevitable. What we can do as elected officials is try to mitigate the, uh, the, the, the circumstances that push our people out, that mitigate the circumstances that our young people that go, uh, that finish high school and then go on to start their lives, that they find Georgetown to be an attractive place for them to come back and raise their family. Uh, do I have the answers? No. And if anyone tries to tell you they do have the answers and it's A, B, C, they're just, they're just spitballing. The bottom line is, uh, we, we want this city to maintain its culture, to maintain its, its, uh, the values and, and what we stand for. Uh, and, and, and I am committed, as is the mayor and the city council, to do the best we can and the most that we can to benefit all and make sure that we don't lose our identity as a coastal, uh, enclave that people have grown and loved for generations.
Just a couple more questions. One of the NAACP home forums with city council candidates.
Sure.
Um, I know you can't speak for the entire J team, but why did Jonathan Enkner not attend?
I had, and I said, uh, we were notified and I sent a, uh, an email with the letter that I had, uh, that I have two daughters, two teenage daughters. One's in college. Um, one is here in high school. She plays competitive tennis and that I do a lot of travel domestically, regionally and around the world. And that I build my schedule 30, 60, 90 days, sometimes a year out. Um, and I, I, I can show you my, 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 my schedule. I'm leaving in just a few short hours to, to, to go across the country. I, I, I would have loved to have taken, uh, taken advantage of that opportunity, but, um, but the premise that we didn't show up, they were, the, uh, the NAACP was notified well in advance, uh, a month or more in advance that, that Jonathan wouldn't be there. And, uh, I have a copy and if you would like, uh, send me an email, I'll send you a copy of what I sent to them that explained why I couldn't be there.
And sort of on a personal note, um, one thing that I have heard people say over the past four years, um, is your temper. I mean, uh, I guess not long after you got elected, you had a, a run in with former mayor Brendan Barber.
Yep.
And there's been a few times, uh, over the past four years that you've kind of snapped at some people.
Sure.
Maybe at the podium during public comment or more, I guess more famously, uh, you're, uh, back and forth with, uh, Councilman Henry Milton.
Sure.
Um, do you have the temper to, to do this?
I would say that, that question is best answered by the people at, 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 at the, uh, at the voting booth. Um, I will, uh, say this without apology. If you run for election and you put out to the people that you're going to look out for the best interest and you come to city council month after month after month after month and you sit next to me and I can tell within seconds of the city that you've not read the backup data, that you have put yourself out to be an advocate for the people, but that you have not done your homework. I think that's fraudulent. And I think the city stakeholders and voters need to realize, need to know who is working for you. Uh, am I, am I short tempered? At, at times I am. Uh, but it's because I'm passionate about my job and I take my job very seriously, uh, for what I'm, I've asked for votes to be on city council. Uh, if you don't want to do the work, then remove yourself from the ballot. But don't show up and ask questions of department heads. And then when I'm sitting here, what you don't see on the camera is I'm sitting here looking at department head, answer a question from someone sitting on this side of the bench, that is a ridiculous question that's answered in the first two sentences of the backup data. That's just, that's just telling this department heads and the city employee that I don't care enough about my job and my oath to do the research, the homework, so that I make informed decisions for the city, which is what, you know, when you sign up for an election, that's what you should be doing. So to answer your question, uh, if I've apologized or if I've hurt someone's feelings, well, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry that I take my responsibility as a city councilman uber serious.
Final question. Um, you and, um, the other incumbent city council members on, on the ballot and Mayor Giroux, all running as one team, the J team.
Sure.
Like you did, uh, four years ago. Why not run just as Jonathan Enkner, like I was, uh?
Why not run as a team as opposed to run individually? I think, um, I think the synergies we have, the passion that we have, uh, the idea and the ideals that we hold dear for the city are all consistent. Doesn't mean I agree with the mayor all the time. Doesn't mean that Jimmy Morris and I agree with each other all the time.
But have you ever voted different?
Yes. And I would challenge anyone, uh, listening to this to do your homework and go back and educate yourself and look at the voting record. We have not always voted together. Uh, but, uh, for the most part, we're going to make an economic decision. We're going to make a decision that's like the, uh, the hate crimes bill. You know, uh, that was something that should have been done a long time before us. But when it came to us, when Tamika and I were at municipal association meetings, that was something that was important and that was something that passed unanimously. But sadly, the J team was attacked for passing it. And, and I can't make sense of why something that was so important, we would be attacked for passing.
So what else you want people to know before they start to vote either October 20th or November 4th?
Well, I would ask anyone to, uh, you know, before casting your vote, take a look at the qualifications. Take a look at the records. Take a look, you know, who is most, uh, prepared to move forward, to continue the momentum this city has, you know? Uh, you never hear about, uh, this administration has been, uh, dissected microscopically for our voting record, for what we've done. You never hear the opponents saying, well, I would do this. Uh, I would, I would handle the, the utility rates this way. So, uh, here are my qualifications. You know, there's never been a more open and more transparent, a a more forthright city administration than what you've got right now. And you've got other people that are running on the other side of the ticket, that have hidden behind soundbites and social media posts that have no, that have no platform, that have no way to answer the questions that we're being asked. How would you reduce the utilities? You know, how would you, what would you have done different to make the city a better place than what we have done different? That's what I would say to the people that vote. Before you cast your vote, ask yourself those questions, and ask the other candidates those questions. What are your qualifications? You know, I'm the founder and principal of three businesses. One business is in excess of $50 million. Another business is in excess of $25 million, and the other is a $17 million dollar business. I have dealt with these budgets. I've dealt with in excess of 600 employees. I've dealt with vehicle fleets of 250 vehicles or pieces of heavy equipment. I've done it since 1996. That's the path that I've walked. That's the qualifications, and that's the experience I've had. I would ask the other people, what intrinsic qualifications and experiences do you have to run a 50-plus-million-dollar enterprise?